Welcome, everybody. This is a virtual meeting of the Transportation Committee of the Baltimore City Council. We are here today for Bill Number 20-0542, Commercial Vehicle Parking: Clarification of Scope, sponsored by Councilman Henry. Before we get into the bill here, I'm going to recognize if you... Somehow, I just got muted, and now I'm unmuted again. Thank you very much. My name is Ryan Dorsey. I am the Chair of the Transportation Committee. With us also are Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, the Vice Chair of the Committee; Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District, a member of the committee; we are also joined by Councilman Bill Henry, the sponsor of the bill that we're hearing today. I believe that Councilwoman Clark is planning to join us. We have representatives from various city agencies and the mayor's office, and we will hear from them as we go through agency reports on this bill. To get things going here, I'd like to ask the sponsor of the bill to make some remarks about it. Councilman Henry?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So, we inherited this topic because we had a constituent who raised the issue of commercial vehicles parking in their neighborhood and questioned the lack of enforcement when we reached out to DOT to ask about that. We learned that the previous city solicitor had directed them to hold off on enforcing this law while they worked on changing it to cope with the situation that I'm about to describe. And that is, there is at least one company that we know of that, in keeping with the city's efforts to do local hire, to encourage local companies to hire locally, had been incentivizing Baltimore City employees to work for them by allowing them to take home commercial vehicles belonging to the company. But then, their employees were being ticketed for bringing those vehicles home. And when we're talking about commercial vehicles, in this case, we're talking about pickup trucks, normal-sized pickup trucks, but they had the name of the company painted on the side of the vehicle, and as such, they were being treated as commercial vehicles and being ticketed. And this seemed to be in direct conflict with the city's avowed goal of trying to get more people employed, especially more local residents employed with companies that were doing business with the city. And so, the previous city solicitor had apparently intended to work on legislation, but then departed, and so I picked up the ball and continued to run with it. The point of this is to bring our definition of what a commercial vehicle is into line both with surrounding jurisdictions and with the practical aspect of people who are just doing jobs either because they own their own business or because they work for a business, and they bring home or use the same kind of vehicles that could be just used by a family for a personal capacity, but because there is the name of a business painted or drawn or assigned a fix to it, they're treated differently. And that was the point. So, this bill changes our definition in the code of what a commercial vehicle is or isn't when it's creating exceptions to the law which prohibits commercial vehicles from parking in residential neighborhoods for extended periods of time, including overnight. I will point out that I believe, and this is just my personal belief, anecdotally, I think that this was originally more about making certain that oversized commercial vehicles were not parked in neighborhoods, that there are large commercial vehicles which are difficult sometimes to find a place to park them, and so truck owners would leave trucks places and go back and pick them up, and that was problematic, especially in neighborhoods with limited parking. The point of this legislation is not to permit that practice. The point of this is to allow people to park their own vehicles or vehicles that they control in their own neighborhoods overnight, just as they would park any other person. And with that, I'm happy to either take questions immediately, or if you want to wait until after we do the agency reports, I'm happy to do that with the committee in whatever order you prefer.
Thank you, Councilman Henry. I would like to take a moment here to ask for any questions from the other members of the committee, if you have any questions for the bill sponsor. No? Okay. I guess I want to make my own kind of comments about this, just so everybody knows what's on my mind with respect to this. Councilman Henry and I spoke about this bill in advance of this hearing, and it's no secret that I have certain feelings about parking and its place in our city and how much of our city gives place to it, and that I think that that comes with real, real costs. There's a book whose title I often refer to, "The High Cost of Free Parking," by Donald Schupe. There is a wealth of information available out there on the social costs of allowing parking free and for cheap, and there are places where it is simply not allowed to park a car on a public street, and I believe those places are better for it, but they have other things going for them as well, like good public transit. So, I have a lot of concerns about parking things in general, but with respect to this bill, I also feel like we are kind of nitpicky as a city in different ways. We say that it's okay for a lot of people to park a lot of cars on the street for free or for extremely cheap, in the case of, say, residential parking permit areas, and in, say, RPP areas, you know, we may allow a household that is 16 feet wide to have four parking permits for vehicles that collectively take up the width of three houses on that block, and anybody on that block can get those parking permits for up to that many vehicles, plus have additional passes to give out to guests who visit their homes. We have a very selective mindset as a city when it comes to how we regard the regulation of parking and who should and should not have access, and under what, as I said, kind of nitpicky conditions. One example that was brought to me, and I'll just maybe to close that thought, is that there's a big part of me that says, if we're going to allow people to park on the street for free, we should just allow people to park on the street and stop worrying about it to some significant degree. And I think that Councilman Henry is right, is that the intention is very largely to control for things like tractor trailers being parked on neighborhood streets and things that are blatantly, significantly oversized vehicles. There are, however, circumstances that I think really illuminate some of the need for this bill. I spoke to a resident in one neighborhood recently where they have a couple of businesses that are in the neighborhood and that are owned and operated by people who live in the neighborhood, and where those vehicles have small minivans or these smaller, like mid-sized vans that are used to transport goods and materials associated with the operation of that business. And while it's a good thing that we haven't designated, like, parking lots requiring them to take up additional private real estate with parking lots in order to park those vehicles, we're prohibitive of those vehicles being parked on the city's street to a certain absurd end, that instead of these, say, minivans being able to be wrapped in nice-looking, you know, van wraps that serve the business well and are attractive, in order to fit into compliance with this law, they get around it by having a magnet that they take on and off of the vehicle by day and by night in order to be able to park it on the street, but then when they need to actually represent their business with this vehicle, the vehicle is still parked on the street. It's just ugly and doesn't do their business as well, and I think that we also want to help those local businesses support. It looked good in the operations of their business. And so, I realize that there is this absurd way that people already get around this rule, and so it's probably reasonable for us to look at a modification to this rule to a reasonable extent. So, that's my kind of general thoughts here. I want to now... We still have no questions from the other committee members or anything? I'm going to go on to bill or agency reports. Okay. Hey. We have... My Pete here is loading properly. Can we start with Law Department?
Sure. Elena DePietra from the Law Department. We have been involved through Ashley Brown with fixing this problem for a while now, and we have reviewed the amendments proposed by this bill and feel like it resolves the problem, so we'll approve or perform legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Can we go to the Department of Transportation?
You, Mr. Chair. Liam Davis, Department of Transportation. You might have noticed I took your advice, logged on to a computer, and finally fixed my issue with the name being undefined. So, I appreciate your IT expertise. So, the Department of Transportation stands by its bill report, which is no objection. Our Safety Division Chief, Toby Goodwin, has been looped in to review the legislation, and he has signed off on it, saying it looks good.
We have the Parking Authority?
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. We're the Baltimore City Parking Authority. We review the legislation and are in support, or rather, have no objection to it. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody bearing with me. I'm having kind of some slow computer issues here. If I could just take one second here, I'm going to resolve a couple of things if everybody could bear with me. Or perhaps from the mayor's office to speak to this on their behalf?
Hey, this is Matt Stegman from Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Fire Department did provide a report on this bill, and I believe that that report stated no objections.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Oh, I know that Michelle did call and say that she was triple-booked at the moment, so not be able to join this department. Has no objection.
That's... Yeah, that's correct. I spoke to her earlier as well.
I have a question for Sir and for DOT about this definition, or lack thereof, on Page 2, Line 2930, panel body delivery trucks with less than 1,500 pounds, three-quarter ton manufacturer's rating capacity. We try to... We're looking at that today. Is there a specific goal that we under... That's a presentation of what that means? Are we very clear? I just... I still don't know what we mean when we say panel truck. Does DOT have a definition that they use for that?
Excuse me. I believe like a panel truck is something where like the rear half of the vehicle is windowless, essentially, and kind of, I think paneled is a kind of a old-school term, but it's more so just something that's covered in the back with no windows. Sometimes you might see like a pickup truck with the back is covered. That's my interpretation of it.
Mr. Chair, it might be worth asking Legislative Reference if this was a piece of the definition that we took from the surrounding jurisdictions. A lot of the language in that was deliberately meant to provide a level playing ground for those neighborhoods that ring the city, where they were part of the neighborhood is in the city and part is in the county, and so we thought there would be beneficial to use the same language and criteria to provide equitable enforcement in those neighborhoods. It's something that we focus on when you represent a district that has multiple neighborhoods that are partly in the city and partly in the county.
Do we have... Tony, is this something that you can speak to?
I can, a little bit. It's directly from Baltimore County's law, and I actually had a very similar question as to what a panel body truck was, and my Google research told me that the best example is these trucks that you see driving down the road that have... They have storage space embedded into the vehicle, meaning that there might be like, for lack of a better term, I'm not an expert in this, but there might be a cabinet in the body of the rear of the vehicle where somebody might be able to keep tools or things like that.
I can't help but think that what's being described to me is a van, and I'm wondering if we're calling a van a panel-bodied truck.
Mr. Chair, my...
Definition in state law.
I'm sorry. What was that, Elena?
I said we could check. I'll check and see if there's a definition in state law.
What I was going to say was that when we had done this image search as well, it appeared, based on the images that came up, that the difference between a panel-body truck and a van is that a van has one interior for the entire vehicle, so you can pass unobstructed from, say, for example, the driver's seat. You can get up inside the van and go all the way to the back, whereas a panel-body truck has a cab, and then it has a covered storage area in the back of the vehicle that is not fully accessible from the cab where the driver is.
And is this... Is there a clear distinction between this and a box truck?
That I could not tell you.
I know that in the Complete Streets Ordinance, we made reference to a specific classification of vehicle as referenced in the NACTO Urban Street Design Guide. I couldn't tell you offhand what the actual classification...
Ah. Actually, see, I got... That definition is... That definition is right here. A box truck has a rectangular shape where the cab is separated from the box. Box trucks can hold 12,599 to 33,000 pounds, depending on the size of the box. So, a box truck would be significantly larger than a panel-body truck that can only hold 1,500 pounds or less.
That seems like a pretty clear distinction there, and I would assume that even if we are talking about a van, that its capacity, weight capacity, is closer to that of a pickup truck than a box truck.
If you think about a 14-person van carrying 14 different people who all weigh 200 pounds, that would be more than the carrying capacity of a truck that could only carry 1,500. So, I would say even a panel-body truck as described in this legislation would be smaller than a 14-person van.
You know, one would expect a comptroller to be good at math like that. Are there any... I'm really having trouble...
I'm glad you went in that direction, because I was looking at Councilman Pinkett's expression, and he was questioning why 14 people would all weigh 200 pounds.
Okay.
He was clearly thinking, you know, most people don't weigh 200 pounds.
So, we have been joined by Councilwoman Clark, and I was...
Which?
Did some... I just heard somebody say, "Mr. Chair."
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is Bullock here.
Bullock.
I appreciate the back and forth around some of the specifications. However, I think I'm pretty okay with the bill. It's pretty much straightforward, in my opinion, so I get where we're going with it, and just want to voice my support at this point.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. We have been joined by Councilwoman Clark, who I would like to give an opportunity to share her thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the committee. First of all, I'd like to, because I don't think he can be present on the phone, I don't believe Mark Washington is present, but he sent me a copy of his letter, and I know that committee has it, and I sent it again, just in case. And he was responding to something about, based on Baltimore County. If you don't mind, I'd like to just read it, it's just a short one, and just express my own concerns as well. This is from Mark Washington, Executive Director of Coldstream Homestead-Montebello, which I might add is the largest populated and geographic neighborhood in the 14th District. So, he says, "Hi, all." As opposed to Baltimore City, Baltimore County, which somebody had drawn a comparison about this bill. Baltimore County residential areas have more of... More off-street parking space for parking in general and less density. I don't understand, in this case, why Baltimore City parking laws need to conform to Baltimore County laws. What I fear with this legislation is that parking, which is already greatly valued commodity in most Baltimore neighborhoods, will be reduced as both the total number of vehicles per household increase and the number of sedentary vehicles increase, creating an even higher premium for a shrinking commodity. Chum does not support or see the need for this legislation. Sincerely, Mark. I'd just like to take a minute to talk about my own concerns, and a lot of them do center on Chum. It's got a lot of people, and it is an urban renewal area, and people who live here take the idea of preserving and upgrading the neighborhood, and they are still at it and very active at every corner of the Chum neighborhood, in the midst of fighting some vacancies and the like. You can't hear me? So, my ladies that I represent in Chum, from all over that neighborhood, complain when they notice and complain when trucks, when commercial trucks park in the neighborhood for a length of time. Everybody knows people come in commercial trucks to fix everything that's broken in our houses, but if somebody decides to park overnight or to make that vehicle part of their daily parking, the neighbors complain. They also complain if people are washing cars for money down the street, and what they're doing with all this is trying to keep up certain standards that they've been raised on and that they have supported to the benefit of the neighborhood and the city. They are going to not like this law, because it basically says, and I know that the heavier vehicles are excluded, but it does say that anyone can park like a regular vehicle with commercial signs on the vehicle now in residentially zoned communities. I've talked at length, of course, to my colleague from the 4th District, the comptroller, 2B. So, he knows, and so I know that this is a worthy cause from the perspective of a company that is a minority flagging company where doing a very good job and letting their employees take their vehicles home, and the vehicles have advertisements that say "flagging." What's the... I forget the name of the company, but... So, they're getting complaints in neighborhoods where they park and they don't want to get them, and the whole city will change. My ladies are not going to like this, and maybe they're... It's the only community in Baltimore that will object. That remains to be seen. I'll know. We'll all know, probably. We'll, we'll all know, probably. So that's my objection. I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about changing what has been a custom and what has been something that residential neighborhoods are used to. Some care about more than others. Struggling ones probably care the most, the way Chum is and doing a good job at it. So that's my position. Now, I would hope, I was going to suggest a sunset where everybody decided whether people had objected or not, but I know I'm not going to get that adopted. So let me just say this, most everybody here in the council, and of course, Councilman Henry is moving down a couple floors, but he'll still be around. I hope that if you pass, that you'll pay attention to whether people are very concerned. People like my constituents in Chum. And if so, give it, give this bill another look in a year and see whether it needs some reconsideration. It's Baltimore, hon. People care. And for a lot of people, this is one of the things they gauge caring on. So that's all. I'm not going to be able to vote for it. I got to be able to tell my ladies I didn't vote for it. I'm not launching a war. I just want you to, please do this for me. Keep an eye on it and see whether it's working or whether there's a way to just help this company without changing the whole city. And I know you don't see that now, and I understand that, but maybe someday you could, if, if people are still, if people get upset the way they will in Chum. And so if you don't mind my leaving, I know you'd love to have me stick around. And special thanks, Mr. Chairman, for letting me even get here today. Thank you so much for your courtesy. Bye, everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Hopefully, at some point, we have a whole lot fewer people relying on cars, period. And so there will be a whole lot less of, but where will we park going on?
Places to put the ads, right?
Yeah.
Well.
Great quote from.
I'm sure that's the future.
Great quote from, from Enrique Penalosa, former president of Columbia, said, "If you ask me where you should park, it's almost as if you, if you ask me where should you put your food or your clothes? This is not a government problem." Okay, so I will go on now to public testimony. I would like to get toward a vote on this bill momentarily here, but I would like to see if there's anybody here for public test, to give public testimony. If you are signed in online, if you could please raise your hand with the raise hand function on WebEx, if you wish to give public testimony. I see no hands raised. I'm going to look over at the attendees list. So I see no hands in the participants list. We have a couple people, I see nobody simply called in, so I assume that anybody who is on the attendee list logged in online would have their hand raised at this time if they did wish to give public testimony, but seeing no hands raised, I assume that there is nobody here to provide any individual public testimony. And so at this point, I would like to ask if there is a, we have no amendments for this bill, and so it seems, unless a committee member has one, but I ask if there is somebody who'd like to make a motion to move this bill.
So moved. So moved, Pinkett.
We have a motion on a bill from Councilman Pinkett. Is there a second?
Second.
The bill moved, is moved, second, moved by Pinkett and seconded by Bullock. We'll now take a vote on this bill. The Chair, Councilman Dorsey, votes yes. Vice Chair, Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
We have three affirmative votes on this bill and none in the negative. This bill is approved by the committee and moves on favorable to second reader this coming Monday, the next meeting of the City Council. And with that, there being no further business of the committee, this committee is adjourned for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.